Okay. So, we will call the meeting to order. We have Leshia, Julie, Frank, and Chris here. The first item is to approve the minutes if someone would like to make a motion for the June 11th minutes.
I motioned to approve the minutes from June.
Great. And then, I don't believe we have any public comment. So, moving into our actionable items. The Insana cycle, there's a lot of development on it. I have kind of a template that we can work through, just so that we make sure to touch on everything for Leshia and Frank. So, the first thing that I wanted to follow up on was I received an email from Lori that because the artist has passed and there's no executor of the estate, that it's a little bit in limbo from the attorneys of the town. So, it's kind of regarding issues with true ownership. So, we got an email from Kevin and he thinks that it'll all go through. But with this, I don't think that we'll meet the July Board of Trustees for the memo to get it approved. So, I think that we'll have to push it to August. I know, I know, just another thing. So, I can let Nancy know that Frank, so that you don't have to tell her again, it's delayed.
There's something about you speaking to Bill that he, I mean, none of that matters?
On the signed letter, the video, signing that video, I can say, he would like to donate to the town, to a couple of guys in the town of Carbondale. He has that video.
He has it, okay.
Should I get that to the attorney?
I think it wouldn't hurt if we wanted to send that to Lori, that she can pass it along to the attorney. Yeah.
Not Kevin?
Or Kevin, yeah. I have his email that I can send it to. Do you have his email Frank?
Because, I mean, it's just maybe if that was all conveyed by Bill, important past, so maybe, and you're so wise to have video.
Recorded it.
That will sign something as well, yeah?
He signed, he signed this letter that I have.
With his assistant, with you, right?
Yeah, that was Bill Morrow, Nancy, Kay, I don't remember his last name, and Doc Phillips. Case Clark. Also, there was two, four, five of us there. And he voiced, and Kay asked the question, do you want to give Insana Psycho a look at it in the town of Carbondale? He's like, yes.
Yeah.
And if he signed, he listened, he agreed, we'll sign it. Signed it, she has the video, I'll get it sent to Shoresman.
Yeah, yeah, I think anything like that, that can kind of help push or to get it done, yeah.
I have the original, that document, which I'm, you know, I mean, I'll hand it over when the time comes, I just don't know if now is the time.
Yeah, and I think too, I, my opinion was that they were reviewing like the verbiage legality behind it. So, if they have a copy of it, then they have what they need to review.
Oh, so they just need the video.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, I'll, I'll shoot Kay a message and with Shoresman, Kevin Shoresman's Park Director email, Public Works Director, and ask her to send that and then confirm to me whether that was sent.
Great.
And I think it's just, they haven't faced a situation like this before in terms of somebody passing and not an executor. And I think they're just covering the bases. I think Kevin did seem to indicate that everything will go through, it's just bureaucracy.
Did you talk to Kevin?
No, no, it was an email, so, yeah.
This morning.
Yeah. In Lori's absence, so.
Yes, yes. So, I think that, again, like Leshia was saying, it's our understanding that it will go through, it's just crossing our Ds and dotting our Is.
So, what do you say, it might be into August, why is that?
So, Lori had indicated that our memo, our CPAC memo, has to be issued to the Board of Trustees by July 3rd, which is tomorrow. So, I think that we would have, and that July 3rd date is for the mid-July Board of Trustees meeting, which is the next meeting. So, A, because Lori's out of town, she's not able to do that memo for us, she ultimately said, I'll draft this memo on behalf of CPAC.
We can't draft it? We are CPAC.
Yeah, but I don't, I just want to make sure that everything is encompassed in it and she has that historical knowledge to make sure that everything is being addressed to the Board of Trustees.
Now might be a good time for me to apologize to all my teammates, but sometimes I get a little frustrated.
Yes, we, we, you know.
But, you know, it's been going on since April and.
Understood.
Yeah.
So, I apologize for me getting a little impatient at times.
We love your passion. Your passion, so.
We realize tomorrow, we have to have to them for 17.
Mm-hmm, I know, it's quick.
Frank, just think it'll be here a long, long time, once it's done.
Once it's done.
So, it's not going anywhere.
I'm not 100% confident it's gonna happen, but when I see it, I'll know.
Okay, and can we move to this picture?
So.
Yeah.
Anything else on the legal stuff?
Nothing else on the legal thing.
Did Lori, last Wednesday, was gonna talk with Kevin Shoresman to see if he had any concerns regarding safety or any concerns at all, did he address, did she or he address that at all?
No, I haven't heard back from her regarding that yet. She did indicate that when the time comes, that someone from CPAC will likely have to go out to rifle to identify those points. So, the sculpture is kind of an osmbolage of all of these scrap metal. And so Lori had mentioned that there's a couple sharp points that maybe somebody might get caught on. And so, the intention is to go in and weld those off and just make it a little bit safer for the community. And so, essentially, somebody from CPAC will have to go out, and I was doing.
And I and Nancy have been talking about all that and her, I can't remember his name, a guy who's worked with Bill for like three decades is willing to do it. He just needs a written list of what to do and, you know.
Frank, did some.
I'm happy to go out there and.
Did somebody from CPAC go out?
I've been out there several times.
I thought.
Mike, Mike.
Not Casey, Mike.
Mike from the town went out and he identified the screwdriver.
It's the only.
Nancy, you know, I mean, Bill's not here to talk, but Nancy, you know, I asked her, you know, can we just remove that screwdriver? She was hesitant at first. And I suggested put a box end wrench on top of the screwdriver and weld it, it's a blunt tool. Or take another screwdriver and have the handle sticking out and tack that to the pointy thing. But at the walk around the other day, she says, we'll just cut it off. I go, okay.
Yeah.
And I, and I expressed her, I go, you know, we may not, we may only get 99.3% of that sculpture here.
Yeah.
It'll be here in perpetuity, so I'd be happy with that, you know? That's better than, that's better than nothing.
How many years, this is the same piece that was in front of the co-op?
Yeah.
For how many years?
2017 to last year. So, 17, 18, 19, 20, 1, 2, 3, 4, 8 years.
His guy, who is willing to do some of these edits?
Yeah, and then there needs to be a little buttoning up the attachment between the rider and the motorcycle. That was kind of made so you could take it apart. And I think once this thing is here, it doesn't need to come apart. And if they were like solidly attached to each other, even if you wanted to move it, then they would just move together. And I talked to Nancy about that too.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, I thought based on the conversation yesterday, that that was the only safety concern, but.
Yeah, well, again, I didn't know what Kevin had thought.
Yeah.
And it's certainly possible, once it gets here, somebody who has some say will say, I don't like the turtle on the front fender, that its head bobs up and down, like somebody could get their finger caught in, I don't know, you know? I mean.
Did you guys talk at all about putting an fence around it when you guys were looking at location?
We did. I, I mean, honestly, it would take away from the integrity of the sculpture. I mean, even to the point where our first option that we looked at, we would have pushed it back so that the wooden fence that's along the bike path wouldn't impede the view of, of the motorcycle. I, I think the, the optimal choice would be not to put a fence around it. Cause there's so much detail to it that.
Nobody, I brought it up and I was like polling everyone a little bit, nobody thought that was a good idea.
Yeah, even the Public Works.
As a, you know, as a, an artwork, it's not an artwork. It's not the Mona Lisa in a Louvre, you know, it's, you know, you could damage it if you touched it. The acid on your skin could damage the painting, you know? Especially a four or five month, whatever, how many year old painting, you know? You can't damage it at all with a sledgehammer, you'd maybe put a dent in it, but you're not gonna hurt it. So, from a safety perspective, I mean, you know, just pretty integrity of the artwork and, and to invite people to get up close and examine it up close, there's so many little details in there, like little bug splattered, and there's a lot of humor in it, there's funny things all over the place and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of neat to, you know, get, get drawn in and go find all these things, you know, and find the humor that he put in it. Put it behind a fence.
Disclaimer that just says, you know, artwork, or something that says, you know.
Don't touch.
You know, don't write it, or, you know, something that will let people know, this is not for.
Yeah. And I sort of had an idea, you know, it's these round circles, it'll be concrete. And I think they're elevated slightly, so you can weed string trim the grass. And then I thought it would be really nice, and we talked about maybe doing a gravel and/or wood chips, you know, with a border, with a border, so it isn't just grass growing up under it and having to be maintained, you know, put, and I talked to Casey about it, you know, a weed barrier, a metal or plastic border, and then at Sopers Park, and it's, they have bark, and according to Casey, this is engineered bark. Engineered not to give kids splinters.
That's funny.
It just looks like bark, I thought that would be wonderful. You know, just, and that would kind of keep people, don't walk on the, you know, it's like landscape, don't walk on this, you know? Well, it gives it a, frames it a little bit and it's like discourages going up and touching it. And I think a do not touch sign is appropriate. That doesn't help Frank Azar and the like.
Okay.
Anyhow, I did babbling on.
So. No, 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 we're gonna need more of your thoughts Frank. So, my intention for today is to approve of, or vote and approve on all of these things so that when Lori gets back into town, she's not waiting on us to approve anything and she can just go and create the memo and submit it as applicable to the next future Board of Trustees. So, I think that notes like that in terms of adding that border into it so that she knows for budgeting purposes. And then in going into the budget, I know that we had kind of done a rough estimate of $10,000 to come out of our 1% for the arts and just wanting to make sure that everyone else is on board with that. I have it that we're kind of at 8,000-ish with a lot of unknowns, including the fence, including the concrete base and what that looks like from Public Works, cause Lori hasn't gotten back to us, but I feel like we should be able to complete it with $10,000. So, does everyone else agree with that?
So, the cost that I, I got to moving, that's a firm price to move it rifle to here, then here to the final. I got a plaque, black and white, I got a black color. I don't, I don't have them in my head, but it's seven, roughly 700 and maybe 900 with shipping. The concrete bases, I don't know, that's Casey and that's Lori.
Do they charge us for that?
Yeah, I think they will.
Okay.
And then I add in a, you know, throw a 20% contingency, if you're at 8,000, you throw 20% and you're 9,600 or so roughly. Which doesn't leave any money if we wanted to do that landscape thing.
Unless we can just.
But it's something maybe we can, we can always add later, we can always fundraise for. You know, and maybe we, we're not at 8,000, maybe we're only at 6, and we have $1,000 to.
But it, it's our fund, it's our money, right? So, if we find we go over, we can put it to another vote to say, do we want to spend another 8,000 to put whatever in, so. I think it's just an initial cost estimate, so the trustees know what we're, we're spending. And I think it's important to put in that memo the value of the donation, which.
It's $100,000.
Yeah, I mean, so you're saying we're spending, we're spending 10% to bring in $100,000 sculpture?
He had it in his auction listed at 100,000, and Nancy has that documentation.
I think it's.
And besides the co-op, it was two years, it was one year earned on the corner in Glenwood, Grand Junction, and they asked to keep it one more year, and so it was two years there and there's, according to Nancy, there's no issues, everyone loved it. No, Frank Azar never got near it.
So, then, do.
Then the welding, when I talked to Roaring Forge, they set up under an hour and I go, I don't know, it's an hour, two hours, if it's just cut the screwdriver off, you don't even need a welder, I mean, I can go to a hacksaw and cut it off and smooth it out a little bit. I'll just leave it at $800, the eight whole hours of doing something. It's not gonna be that, and Nancy said, this guy, it's not.
So, and Frank, if they have to attach the rider to the bike, that's welding?
Yeah, so that's, you know, I'm just, I think I'll just leave that at eight hours. It won't be, but just, you know, maybe it's six hours and there's a 20% contingency, maybe somebody or Shoresman, when they see it, they got another, you know, if somebody has to go weld on site, they need a special generator-driven welder, it's a whole different thing, a guy, a person in a shop, it's real easy, you know? Just turn the welder on and weld, but to weld on site, like they're welding on site, what it's called a stick welder, Mike. And, you know, we could probably stick weld whatever needed, but the pieces, it's called MIG welding, it's all wire feed, MIG welded, it just looks different, it looks cleaner.
Okay, yeah, I like keeping it at that 800 mark, just so that we have, like you said, a little buffer, just in case.
Nancy felt pretty strongly about the color photo, did you talk to her?
I haven't talked to her yet.
What about the color plaque?
There's an image, that image.
Being in color?
Being in color.
It's originally in color, yeah.
And, you know, what it costs.
So, this is what.
150, no, this is just, it was a layout just to get a price. And that doesn't even have to be the layout, but just to get a price of like, okay, the photo's pretty big, the thing's eight by 10 inches, how much? And that's the numbers we got.
Yeah, so, going to the plaque, I did go back and forth with her on the narrative for it and she did approve this narrative with a small tweak, she got back to me like 15 minutes before.
And that's Nancy?
That's Nancy, Nancy approved it. This template is something that I've always heard referred to as like an art tombstone. So, it has like all of the important information at the top, has artist name, title, material, normally it has the date, she didn't, Nancy didn't have an exact date for it, so we just omitted it for the purposes of this. So, again, this is a very standard art template that is often used in museums and galleries. If we wanted to use it, we could, if not, if we wanted to make it more of like a memorial plaque, we can change the layout so it mirrors more of that style, if that makes sense. Do you guys have a preference?
I, I think that it's a really nice write-up. I, I think it kind of highlights his talents, his connection to Carbondale, and the fact that he gifted it to Carbondale. But, yeah.
I was just talking with my wife and she was drafting up, again, just to get a price. And I, and I thought, it's awfully formal.
Oh, that's.
And that's not Bill.
Yeah.
And I thought, maybe it should be like Insana Cycle, crazy, and my wife actually hand drew that out, Insana Cycle, you know, letters all a little cock-eyed and, you know, I don't know, it's just a little more Bill, not so formal, but it's up to Nancy really.
Okay.
She's the one that's so attached to him and his art and his legacy and all that, so I'm like, okay, you, you, whatever you think.
I have not.
That's me, that's just me, I'm just monkey in the zoo, I'm not the zookeeper.
Yeah.
I, I, I kind of hesitate to ask this question, but I'm gonna throw it out there anyway. And, and Chris, I don't, how long have you been on? Have you been here when we've received a donation? Not like this, but a donation of a sculpture? And is it always CPAC that pays out of our fund versus, like, could we ask the town for money or?
Our responsibility.
It has been, okay. I'm just trying to see if we can save some money for future sculptors.
Done quite well, so that every year, we seem to end up with some extra.
Okay.
Don't get to carry over, so I think we're doing well with the money allotted.
Okay.
And yeah, it's unusual years that we get something like this, or try to think of the last donation. But, you know, some of the more, some of the art around town sculptures that they didn't want, you know, they wanted to leave. And then they go, like the buffalo, what's his, what's his name?
Ernesto.
Yeah, Ernesto, you know, he's been moved a couple of times, but I love that, he's, he's still ours. And it gets better along that corridor, 133 with more sculptures, so. Yeah, I think, I don't, we could always try to throw it on, you know, as someone else to help us with that, but I think we've done quite well, Nancy.
Just thought I'd throw it out there to, as a consideration. I'm sure we can also get, Lori would have history on that too.
Yeah, definitely.
And she would tell us what the proper fund was.
Yes, which is so nice.
Yeah, it is.
Thanks Frank.
Lori wants to, you know, have concrete, well, she originally wanted a big concrete slab, you know, and then like weld it to the slab, like all the the one-year sculptures are. What do you, anyone have any thoughts that like, maybe we just set it down on blocks like it is now and like it sat at the co-op and then maybe it lives at the Third Street Center for three, four, five years, then moves to, I don't know, out front here for a couple of years and Fourth Street Plaza across from, straight across from the Dinkle Building, maybe it lives there for a little while, I don't know.
I like the idea of it being permanent somewhere. And I, and I do understand Lori's intention with having it welded. I also understand, you know, it's heavy, it's not gonna go anywhere, but I wonder if by having it welded and having it securely mounted, that town will be more inclined to accept it then, is by working through all of these processes.
I like, I'm not sure about the concrete, but I like that it sits in one spot. Cause I think then it becomes, you know, let's go meet over by Insana Cycle, you know, I mean, the, our permanent collection is our permanent collection and people get used to seeing it where they are and they become kind of a landmark, so. Like Ernesto's a landmark and I think Insane Cycle will become one also. Plus, you know, I, I just don't want to have to go, honestly, practically speaking, thinking about moving that thing every five years. And, you know, yeah, yeah. Well, yeah, but then you move it and then do you have to put a new pad down, do you have to put a new, you know, all of that, if they have safety concerns over it, so. But, but the bottom line is, I like it permanent and to find a home in, it becomes an iconic spot in Carbondale.
I actually think that part of town has kind of been neglected. Remember when part of our walk-around, art around town was right by the library and some people couldn't walk that far, so now it's not on our map anymore. But, you know, the fact that, I think that's a great spot for it because of Third Street Center, because of the bike path, because of that 133 visibility, I prefer it.
And I like the location that you guys selected as your recommended one, that it's kind of off to the side if it's town property, if we can do it.
Between, between Third Street and wanting to have that strip of land.
So, Kevin hasn't weighed in on that, whether it's town property or not?
Not yet, mm-mm. So, again, let's wait for a little.
At the end of tonight, will we make a motion?
That's my intention, is to make a motion with a couple contingencies. So, contingent on, you know, the legal things going through, contingent on this location, option one, pending it's town property, if not, pivoting to option two.
Okay, so we'll, we'll leave tonight with a motion and then Lori will draft a memo. I'll get the video to, you know, all these little pieces, okay?
So, yeah, my intention's to have it be a bit more buttoned up so that now it's really moving forward.
So, this photo shows both option one and option two location?
Yeah, on the back.
So, this is option one?
Yep.
This is option?
Two.
To pass the fence there. Yes.
Right, but I think.
They're very close.
So, sorry, it's, it's my, so if you look at this, to the left of, I think I have the right one, the correct one.
By the telephone.
So, so to the, to the left, the telephone pound farther back on the flat area is opt, is our first option, it's kind of almost where the.
The garden bits.
Right, the other option is on Third Street Center property, on the left side of the walkway, and so there's.
Right beyond the fence?
Yes.
Right behind that fence?
Yes, yes, and that's one of the reasons why, I mean, you have the wooden fence, you have the chain link fence, you know, it's busy over there, so. I don't know if insane and cycle, insane cycle has enough presence to just kind of make that all go away, but you have a, you know, a dog bag station, you have a trash can there, it's just kind of busy, but.
So, I think intention is to proceed with option one.
Option one if possible, but, you know, they weren't able to tell us. Option one if possible, but the, you know, they weren't able to tell us if that was town property or not, the, the Public Works guys that were there.
I wonder if any of this was town property?
Yeah. Behind that pole, yeah.
Well, it's, it's not both town property, I don't know what property it'd be. And I think it was right away or.
This is on a.
Like this is the Third Street Center here.
Right.
And that, yeah, that part, the, the, the way or, I mean, the fact that there's a sign there.
Right.
This is an ownership zone.
And the fact that if if this were the spot, the concrete slab would be be- behind that and toward the trees?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right there, but this is flat and open. With an opening in the trees.
And it'd be visible as you're coming into it?
No, really, it's.
Visible there.
Please, let me show you, so this is option one right here, right?
Option one, we originally thought on this side, but that's where the tree is, this might not be the right picture.
With the chain link fence in this.
It's, it's great over there.
So the first option is closer to the garden bit.
Yeah.
From this um, bike path, from Third Street Center.
That is our first choice.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then the second one is this.
Yes, on the left-hand side, because they were afraid about the irrigation lines for the trees.
Well, because it's so large and we're gonna do a concrete slab and I love the idea of the wood chips. I mean, I think it's gonna make a presence in either spot.
It's a good point.
And having worked for several years at Third Street Center, I mean, that area with the bike path there intersecting with one thirty-three to go to Wint or to go to, you know, or Valley Ranch, I mean, I think it's gonna have its own presence and I like the idea that it's permanent, so that, like you say, that becomes a place of its own in this town, that doesn't have any permanent.
Right, right. So then the last thing that I have is that when we do submit our memo to the Board of Trustees, a member from CPAC has to go and present our memo to the Board of Trustees. I was wondering Frank, if you wanted to do it, cause you have so much of the historical knowledge.
Why?
That would be great. And I think too, you have so much.
July, I'll only do it if it's in July.
Oh, I can't guarantee.
Hope it's not September when you appear.
Yeah, I'll be drawn about September.
So let's hope that we can present, present it.
Nancy may or may not wanna attend that, I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, she could attend as a citizen, right?
Sure.
It's a trustee meeting.
Dance, to let her know when the meeting was. A very informed citizen.
Mm-hmm.
Carrie, Carrie would like, oh. Kay Clark and Doc would probably wanna be here too, like, they showed up at the walk-around. So, yeah, no, I'd be happy to do it and um, have a supporting cast probably.
Yes, yeah, that's great.
You need.
I would too, yeah.
Great.
We could make it a packed house.
Yeah.
All seven of us.
Okay, so, does someone wanna make a motion to approve this with all of those contingencies?
I do.
Okay.
Could you verbal, could you state the contingencies?
The contingency is, the first one is based off of the legality of the transfer. And the second one is finalizing that location as town property for the option one. Those would be the two contingencies and we have a not to exceed budget of ten thousand that we're gonna include in the memo.
My second.
That's it?
My second.
Yeah? Ally?
Well, third, or fourth, or fifth.
What's the motion? Without the contingencies, just the motion? I got the contingency part, but is it to?
Accept.
Accept.
Stall.
Accept and install the donation.
Yeah.
Yep.
Nancy has said this several times, that, or like in the letter, it should say, we're gonna ensure it and we're gonna maintain it.
In perpetuity.
I'm not sure you can say that, cause you're, you're committing a future Board of Trustees to spending money. You could maybe say as long as it's displayed. Maybe a future board doesn't like it and wanna get, wants to get rid of it, so. I'm not a legal person, but I'd said, as long as we display it, we're insuring it and maintaining it.
I don't know if that's something that's in Lori's acceptance letter, I don't know if that's covered in there.
The fall under the, the other remaining collection, I'm sure they're insured. I mean, it would be an umbrella. Policy.
Yeah.
But Lori can help us understand that.
A good, good question.
I think, yeah, considering it would end up becoming town property, anything that is town property is technically, I would assume, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a good question.
Is there something in the letter, Frank?
Yeah.
And Colin Laird, who runs at Third Street Centers and is on the Board of Trustees, would be very knowledgeable about some of our unsure things, so. Won't take lo- take long to button it up, I don't think.
Yeah.
Dear P A C, Arts Commission, I submit the gift of my sculpture entitled The Insane a Cycle, the Carbondale Public Arts Commission, P A C, for the Art Around Town Permanent Collection. Carbondale P A C will be responsible for transporting the sculpture to Carbondale and securing it in a public space and handwritten afterwards in Bill's words, "Pay it," throwing this up and then Bill expressed, "Act will ensure and maintain the work."
Yeah.
So that'll be in the letter that they.
Acceptance letter that states that.
Yeah.
The attorney that reviews it can confirm whether that, the insurance policy of the current permanent collection meets that requirement.
I'm sure it does.
I don't know if we have to brandize it, if it's written in the letter, they will look at.
Mm-hmm. And I think we'll include that as an attachment in the memo.
Absolutely.
So they'll read it, will they? Yeah.
Put this in the memo? Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, I have a copy. Mm-hmm.
Video, I'll probably see if I can get it on a, a, a screen.
But not now.
See if I can email it, but probably on her phone.
Yeah, his phone.
Mm-hmm.
Nancy might have taken a digital also.
Yeah, I think you could even like upload it as a dot M O V and then you can share that. Or you can send it to me and I can do it.
Yeah, yeah. See, uh, we'll, we'll find out.
That'd be great. Physically transfer it? That's great. Okay.
Uh, did you, all in favor? Sorry, we had a motion and a second, did everyone vote?
Oh, no.
So yeah.
All in favor.
Solidify that, okay.
Aye.
Okay, great.
All right, are we ready to move on to the next items? Are there any other questions? Okay. So, information only, I have the art walk. I have a couple extra follow-ups, so I did the thank you cards, I don't, I think Leshia has them, Chris, if you wouldn't mind signing them. We did them for the Public Works team, just a simple thank you. And I, we did a gift card, Ally and I, two papinos for each of them.
Nice.
Lori did mention that they often do thank yous for the donors. So that would be Rebecca Lodge Marble Distillery and Margaret. So I think if someone wouldn't mind tackling that and coordinating like a handwritten thank you note and delivering it to them. And she's had said historically, they also do a letter to the paper outlining that thank you so that it's published for them as well.
Who's the last?
Um, it was Margaret, others. So those three, Rebecca Lodge. But still, we should acknowledge always.
Did they say what paper?
No, she didn't. The sopress, but I would think it'd be the sopress.
Yeah.
And Ally said that they have, you have cards, right, from the town of Carbondale that we could use?
Yeah, uh, very basic, um, just plain white cards that just say thank you on the top.
So does somebody wanna initiate that and oversee it?
Sure, I'll do it.
Okay, thank you, Leshia. All right.
We're, we're not doing gifts, we're just saying thank you.
Yeah.
Ellie, do you, do you have those ones?
Yeah, I can grab them after the meeting.
Thank you.
And then, follow-up on the damaged sculpture. So I did talk to Sarah, the artist, um, today about it. And she's currently rebuilding the sculpture, she said that she has been reviewing the mounting method that she believes will have more structural integrity to make it stronger. Um, and that she's hoping to install it over Mountain Fair Weekend. So, she's like, that's my plan, I don't know, that's not a guarantee, but that's the intention, is to have it completed by then. And I'm, so that's the conversation that I had with her, I haven't heard from Lori about like her side of it with the town, to understand if insurance has gone through, I know that she had submitted a claim, but I don't, when I last spoke into her, there was no additional follow-up yet. And just to clarify that, we, CPAC will get a percentage of that claim for the damaged sculpture, which is twenty-five percent. And then the artist will get the rest of it.
A- and do you know, is she just getting the asking price on that, whatever the?
I bet it was the retail, but I don't know the exact amount, but I think retail was six thousand.
And then they'll have to coordinate with Lori to get the move on.
Mm-hmm.
You know, Mountain Fair might be a crazy time to try to do that. Well, and if you were just after Mountain Fair, it'd probably be safer than the.
That's what I would.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It seems like you're adding a lot of extra um, vendors onto that part of town. Well, it's always a danger.
Yeah, rowdy. Yes. Frank?
Where does the twenty-five percent go, in the CPAC fund or in the one percent?
One percent.
Okay, so we don't have to, we don't have to spend it right away.
So it, it doesn't go in the budget?
It just goes.
It goes into the, that's the difference.
Yes.
And if the entire sculpture were six thousand, how much was the damaged part?
I think a hundred percent.
I was gonna say.
I would say it's in totality. Yeah.
It was so short after.
Yes.
Can we, can we create a sign that says, do not touch?
I think, I think I saw one on there that says, do not climb. Or it says, do not touch or do not climb. Yeah, on the, on the marble plaque, it has something along those lines of.
After this happened, or?
That I don't know.
So, yeah, I don't remember seeing that, so.
That never's.
Yeah.
Be a good idea for this one.
Yeah, for sure.
Mm-hmm. Something she did mention was swapping locations with another sculpture, so that it's not at that corner. And I think Lori will have to advise, because that would be her team moving another sculpture to that location and it's gonna be added work, that I don't know if they have time for or want to, so I was gonna propose that to Lori and see.
What, some central?
She, yeah, she doesn't want it on that corner across from the Black Nugget, she wants it at a different location that she perceives as being safer.
That she recommended one?
I think the only one is the hard one, maybe.
Where, I think the bark, that's right on.
Oh, mm-hmm, that little one?
Yeah.
Behind the fence?
Mm-hmm.
From the trail, yeah.
Right here, you know, where the um, what's on the other?
Yeah, it's right here on Unreal.
Yeah. There.
Yeah, I like that.
You know, that one, the bark one is very small.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's strong.
Yeah.
And it's, looks like it takes the same marble-sized stand as, not so, what it hers is.
Okay, I'll propose that to Lori.
And somebody mentioned the launch pad because it's behind landscaping. There was, there was you, yeah, yeah, that, that's.
Have to move that big butterfly. And the launch pad, I think if it's not big, you're not gonna see it.
Uh, that butterfly just looks really good, that launch pad. I mean, that little heart also by Brass Anvil.
Yeah. And that little, cause it's kinda protected by the stairs and the hand railings.
That's a pretty great thing. I like it there, yeah.
And you might lose the heart if you put it on that corner.
Maybe, yeah. Just, just an option.
Yeah.
Those are the only smaller ones that may work to swap with her, because the dinosaur's tiny. And I think that, I don't think the dinosaur's in a good spot.
Not, not.
Protected spot.
Not for ceramic.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I'll send those through to Lori and see if her team even wants to do it or can't do it.
I have to say, historically, the location of the dinosaur, and maybe it's this during Mountain Fair, has historically been the most damaged sculpture.
Hmm, that's funny.
Well, that's good to know when we're thinking about future locations. And I, you know, it's not a topic for today, but another day. Those two locations near that um, the Nugget Bar, you know, the one across and the one on the corner, I just don't know if that's where one has sculpture, but.
In terms of like maybe moving the pedestal?
Yeah, or moving the Nugget.
Oh, the Nugget. That's funny, okay, great. So then, moving on, I have we, Leshia and I have been talking quite a bit about establishing a marketing committee. Um, Leshia, do you wanna walk us through this?
Um, I, I think we, we sat down and um, did a little historical walk with Lori about what has been done in the past and she shared some documents with us and um, I, I guess I would just say, the efforts seemed to be pretty robust and um, you know, one of the questions, uh, as I looked through and counted, there were like twelve people working on marketing for the art walk? And I don't even know if we have twelve people in our committee, so.
Well, never they got the twelve, we've never had twelve.
Well, I'm wondering if, if we could recruit people that aren't part of the Public Arts Committee that would just work on marketing efforts, I don't know how that works.
Leading up to the art walk.
Yes, yes, so for example, the, you know, they had somebody that was in charge of print and we could have somebody in charge of, let me back up, we thought, we should, we probably would need pre-art walk marketing and then post-art walk marketing, right? And the pre would be, you know, getting it into print, um, getting it out on Instagram. I've been also looking at um, the different arts committees, Grand Junction and then Basalt, and looking at their cafe entries and, and you know, they have some different criteria that they put in there and do we wanna take a look and see what we, you know, like for example, Grand Junction gives a stipend and they put them up for two nights. Um, you know, I don't think we have the budget for that, but it's just good to understand maybe what others are doing. I know that um, Basalt, for example, just established the Public Arts Committee and they wanna get into an, an art exchange program with other communities, so there could be an opportunity there, so it just seems like um.
Some benchmarking.
Benchmarking some, but working with them also to see if there could be some synergy between the two. I think kinda understanding, um, you know, for example, in the past, in, I don't know, twenty fifteen, when Cheryl? It's been within the last ten years, they had somebody assigned that, you know, met the artist in town and made sure that they had, you know, lunch served and they walked them around and they greeted them and um, kinda handheld them and see if they had any questions, and then you had the post-reception committee. And then after that, you had thank yous posted in the paper, like, it just seemed like there were process. And then after that, you had thank yous posted in the paper. Like, it just seemed like there were processes in place versus, um, uh, you know, me asking my friends, are you going to Art Walk? And they're like, oh, we didn't even know it was happening this Thursday, so um, I guess the vision is, is to maybe re-establish and, um, and set some new processes in place, so we're not wondering, like, did you reach out to this person and can you reach out to?
Yeah, very reactive, I feel.
Yeah.
And kind of put a timeline, you know, of how things should roll out. So, you know, it's kind of instantaneous and we're prepared and have people on deck.
Or, or just have people assigned to responsibilities, and then they just run with it, and it's not something that we have to email back and forth and around. You just, you come to the monthly meeting and you kinda report, this is what hap- you know, I got, I got an ad in the Sopris Sun, and this reporter's coming, and I reached out to that. So, you know, that's the idea. Um, I mean, we have five of us in the room now, so, uh, again, I don't know if that's a question for, um, Lori, I don't know what the charter is here, is if we can bring in people that aren't voting members on the committee to, that would be like to work on marketing. I don't know if you, we recruit students, you know, from the college to help us with marketing, somebody who's a marketing major. Um, you know, I think those are the kinda things that, I don't know that we would figure everything out here, but you take offline and you put some processes into place for people that wanna work on marketing efforts.
What, how does that sound with everyone else? Is that something that is in, of interest, so that we can establish more structure? And this is coming from a place of me being very new, um, to see, again, like, what is working well, what isn't, what are things we can improve on? What level of involvement does the committee wanna be in general, too? It's what do people's schedules have, um, and kind of where do we see this committee moving towards in the future? Cause I think, like, I'm super organized and I have things very, um, blocked, and how I am, my brain works, is it's very much like, this task, this task, pass it off. And the ambigu- ambiguity is really hard for me of not knowing if someone's doing something, and I think that that is why certain things also take a lot longer, like the insanity cycle. It just wasn't outlined what each thing needed to be done to get it to the finish line. So, I was thinking that we would, Lesha and I would really put like pen and paper for our next meeting to say, these are kind of the essential committees that we see. But I wanna make sure that everyone's on board that's here, so that we spend our time building towards something that we're all on the same page about, so that we're not spinning on something and spending fifteen hours on it if it's ultimately not gonna go forward. So, thoughts?
I like the idea of structure, and it's in my spreadsheet way of looking at things. And it could be a playbook for whomever is on this committee in the future. There's no reason to try to rely on memory banks or, um, people staying on the committee forever. And so to have something that could be perpetually updated, and here's our playbook, it's Art Walk time, who wants to do this, this, and this? I think it'd be much easier.
Well, and as you said, looking back in the history, it was, it did seem like it had a more robust, uh,
Effort.
Action.
Yeah.
And in my time, having had several different, and it's the beauty of having new blood, you know, running the show. Because I think it dropped off, and, and I feel the result of that, in just how things play out. Or how, you know, the dance cycle has to drag out when it probably didn't have to, but, um, so no, I think the idea is to, you know, how far we flush them out? I think we first start with, okay, the things that need to, um, be more structured. And the things that need to have certain people be responsible for, and, and kinda report back what's going on. So I think that's, um, a movement that if we're in need of, we'll see back now.
Okay, great, Frank?
Question for Ally, who in the town maintains their website? A town employer, or they have an outside contractor?
No, we all maintain it differently. Like, I update the boards and commissions pages and information on there, like, who be, is the next chair and whatnot. Um, if you're talking about more like the newsletters and social media, that's our public, um, information officer. So she handles all of that.
Yeah.
That's Anna.
Anna, yeah. Um, with the fire department, we have, we were, we're under contract with Backbone Media across the street. And they maintained our website and our social media, Facebook and Instagram. And kinda, you know, presented what they wanted, or we, we gave them things we wanted on the website, you know, the fire safety information or, you know. You know, we had a big fire here, and the crews did this and this and this, and put it out, you know, and our little pat on the back stuff, and, um, yeah, just let the committee know what we're doing, you know, and, um, and, uh, I've been, and I've had a few different jobs, and I've worked in different arts organizations, and in this valley, there's a lot of retired people, and there's a lot of people that came from, and I'm sure there's a lot of people who have worked in, you know, New York marketing firms and big firms and small firms, and um, and I, I was just thinking about the Carbondale Chamber. You know, they do marketing for tourism, and, um, maybe, you know, some of us could meet them or go to one of their meetings and see if that could be a potential resource. And then, um, you know, I like the idea, and I think, you know, over the, over the years, the number of entries for, from the artists has sort of dropped off a little bit. And I think, you know, us marketing and putting in print and social media, information about the artists and more about the Art Walk, and if we're more attended and all that, that may help. You know, a little buzz out in the art world that, hey, the Carbondale's really doing it well. And, you know, I will get more exposure. Yeah, if I, if I, I went around on the install day, and that was the first time I ever did that, and it was great to talk to a different artist, and you know, I've known, I know a lot of artists, and anyhow, but it's like, this is a difference sort of artist than I've known that take, then make work to put in these little one-year shows for no money. And that's their livelihood, that's their livelihood, their business is to do that and hope to sell or gain commissions. So anyhow, the marketing of this whole thing helps that person. Helps the town, the town image. I mean, why do we do this? Why is there a Public Arts Commission as to enhance the community, and, you know, we are kinda art-centric community.
Definitely.
And, and just on, on that point, so Basalt established their Public Arts Commission last year. They're brand spanking new. This is their first year for the Call for Artists. So, we can view, view them as competition from not always a very large supply of sculptures, sculptors who are willing to make the trek, or we can try to work with them also. You know, on a, an exchange program. You know, they're implementing a two-year consignment program. I mean, their website's interesting. They have a master plan, they have a two-year consignment program, you know, so, I don't know. Maybe we look at that to artists, maybe we have some two-year consignments versus one-year consignment. You, you know, my, my concern is, A, the competition, A, the rising cost for people, and how willing they'll be to keep coming and hauling their art out here. So, you know, let's make sure we know what's going on around us, and let's make sure that we market the artists that do come to us, and make sure we're doing a good job marketing for them, as well as bringing art to the people of Carbondale.
And I wouldn't see an issue, you know, Basalt accepts this artist, this whatever. And then the following year, I mean, when it comes time to decommission, I don't know what the timing is, but, you know, decommission it from Basalt and then bring it here.
I totally agree with that.
That would be like, really.
Like, why don't we?
Give an artist.
On it, and then?
Give an artist an exposure in the Roaring Fork Valley where there is, um, you know, there's wealth in this valley, and people who buy art, and, you know.
And I would argue they're two different community cultures, so you're not repeating by going to both places. But, but I think, um, maybe the bottom line of what, uh, Michelle was getting at. I, I feel like my first six months there has been an advisory, you know, this is what we're doing, yes or no? I, I think we need people that are willing to dig in and do some work also, and not just be advisory, and I think that's the question before us, is if people are willing to pick up some of these responsibilities, then to, for marketing, you know, not the whole thing. We, we, we cut it up into sections and then we assign folks to it, and it's gonna, you know.
It could very well be, like, Backbone across the street might pick it up for a reduced rate and say, okay, we'll do this marketing for whatever. As, as a part of our little donation to the cause, you know.
Sure.
There's other marketing firms, I just.
I mean, we have money left over. I mean, it's our budget, right, so we could utilize it the way we think best, but I know we have to understand, we just have to work through and understand what the town allows and doesn't allow, so that's kinda the next step. In terms of putting material out on their website, so.
I think for the next meeting, we just kinda write down, here's our goals. Just, you know.
And I think too.
Five thousand foot level, here's what we want to accomplish.
Yeah.
And then we can here's the ones that we wanna take on, or pick and choose the ones, and maybe we need out, outside expertise to take on. And either as a donation, or a partial donation, or it is what it costs, you know? And this is not a huge project, you know, it's not, you know, multi-year ongoing, it's just kinda, let's get this thing advertised very well and get it out there, and, um, and then let's celebrate the artists that we accepted and give them some press, some kudos.
Yeah.
Um, I like the idea of starting to write things down, have a playbook for future. I like that, too.
Reason not to have a playbook. It should have been a playbook for donation. You know, that would have made it so easy.
So you could just.
Process.
Hand someone the thing and go, here.
Mm-hmm, yeah, absolutely.
And, and maybe there is, but we just don't have that information.
Right.
Of course, somebody to buy a sculpture and then donate it. Yeah, like, when we did a walk, it's like, you know, here's where, you know, Ernesto out in front of City Market, the Bison, you know how we got that? Somebody bought it.
Right.
And it was not inexpensive, fifty thou or something?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five thou. Somebody wrote that check, you know? And gave it to the town. We, we welcome those sort of things.
Uh, well, just, just.
Or in print, or on our website, or somewhere.
Just to reiterate, so, um, that, that's exactly the information that we, we got from Lori, from the previous committee. It's got, you know, the chair responsibilities, what the Public Works Department does, what Public Relations does, what the Marketing Committee does, and, and when, and when kinda thing. So that's, that is the goal, once we took a look at that, is to, you know, just take the mystery out of it, like, it's October.
In all my years, I've never seen.
Well, and what's really interesting, I don't know if you saw this, Michelle, is the mission statement. Cause the mission statement doesn't say we, we just work on sculptures. It says public art, so.
Yeah, and that's definitely something, too, that we should review, is our mission statement. And what are our goals, and how do we?
Been written and what we wanna see.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly, and how that ties in with what Carbondale Arts does, and maybe, you know, what another department does, and make sure that we're clear on what, what our goals are.
What are we?
And values, yeah. So, I think, I know that Lori had said to you that traditionally in the summers, there's not any meetings, that they kinda take the summer off, but I think it would be good to iron out some of the, like, committee details during the summer and structure of it, and then as we jump back into November where the cafe goes back out, and we're working on the Art Walk cycle, that then it kinda picks up, but we can take some time on the internal documents and iron out the details. So if you guys are good with it, I'll add that to the agenda for next month.
I'm good.
I'm good. I'm happy to brainstorm on marketing things to get kind of a, a framework or a template that we can build from.
Great.
I think I just heard a marketing.
Oh, my. I love it. Okay. Do you guys have any other questions or comments for today?
One comment. I'd be happy to go up to one of Basalt's meetings or set up a range to like, have twenty minutes just before their meeting to just sit and meet each other and chit chat, and, hey, what are you guys thinking about? Here's what we're thinking about. Um, I'd even go to Grand Junction if somebody wanted to join me. I guess it can only be two at a time, I don't know.
Yeah.
If, if it's an out, yeah, you're right, but.
If we're just going to meet and greet with Basalt, that would be wonderful. And that'd be, that'd be great if we could all go. I don't know if we can legally all go, it's just, we're just, hello, where, where does CPAC, you're B-PAC?
I think, I think if you represent the town in any capacity outside of this room, then you're technically representing the town.
Well, I guess we could post it. Our new Public Arts Commission is gonna have a sit-down talk with the Basalt Public Arts Commission on such, such a date, right?
Frank, we could have a representative ask them to come here.
Yeah, you could also do that.
Chat with us and tell us. Yeah, one of our meetings, and then what, you know, what are you guys doing, what, you know, and then we're all here and we can ask questions.
Yeah, and I think, too, we would wanna kind of, if we did have a, a conversation a step further, where we're saying, oh, we wanna partner, we wanna, I think that we would have to iron out those details and what that looks like internally before we extend any sort of olive branch over there, to make sure that we're all on the same page first. And in terms of what that looks like before addressing them. But if it's just a, hey, do you wanna come? This is what we're doing, this is what you're doing, and then it goes from there, awesome.
As you said, you went alone to ask, to join one of their gatherings or.
To listen in. Yeah.
So, so I think I'm, I've got this right by looking at the websites. It's interesting. So Grand Junction is a creative arts district, and they don't have a Public Arts Commission, but they have art on the corner, which is, I believe is under the Creative District. Not sure about that, that's something. Basalt does, is not a creative district. They are going to, in their master plan, apply to become a creative district to get money from the state, and they have a Public Arts Commission. And if you look at us, we are a hybrid of those two, because we do have a creative art district, and we have a Public Arts Commission, so. Just saying, it's interesting how they all operate.
Structure.
A little differently.
Mm-hmm, definitely.
Well, and a Carbondale guy, Joe Burley, was on this CPAC. He's also a sculptor. Piece was that blue one last year down by Snowman's Drive.
The cube.
But he has, um, multiple times submitted to the Grand Junction one. And he knows a lot about what he liked as an artist about their setup. So, I think he'd be a great person to ask to come and fill us in.
Yeah, get an artist's perspective, that's awesome.
He knows a lot about Carbondale's, um, system over the years.
Yeah.
And I know that we had, as a, a committee, kind of a, a post-event kind of brain dump about what went well and what didn't go well. I mean, is there any, I think we might. I mean, is there any, I think we might gain some insight from the artist. You know, if we were to ask them, you know, thank you for bringing your art, you know, what, like questions about how did their, how did it feel for them though on the install? Was there anything we could improve on?
Yeah.
You know?
And I think that goes back to having a committee, like one or two people who are with them.
Right.
And can, and then it's a, I would say a more like fluid conversation to say, okay, what went well, what didn't go well?
They call that an Artist Relations Committee.
It's perfect.
And they had a Permanent Sculpture Committee, which reviewed the permanent sculptures around town to see if they needed work. And, you know, so they had, there's some good ideas so that we can springboard off of. I'm not saying we need to do all of this certainly, but, you know, I think it's, it's good to look.
That, like this evaluation of the permanent collection and if it needs to do any, anything needs to be done with it. Is that something that Lori has taken on?
Yeah.
In her role?
I think she looks at it from, from the condition of the sculpture, not necessarily the aesthetic value. You know what I mean? And that's not, I think that would be our
Yeah.
choice, right? To say, I don't know, that sculptor's timed out. I, I, I don't know. We don't have criteria for that, so.
Being in fourth, that over the years, we pretty much asked them. No, no, not the bear, not the bear. But it was like these.
I remember that, I remember that one.
And I remember Michael was on the committee, because we had, we voted and I wasn't quite sure what they disliked about it, but they decided they'd been there long enough. And I don't know if it was part of the, what category it was in. But, yeah, it would be kind of good to have a little more written down for what our methods would be.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah. And then just one last little, I, I just find this kind of fascinating to look. Grand Junction, it's curated by one or two people. So it's not a vote like we do, which I thought was kind of interesting. Submissions.
And then one or two people.
They choose, yes.
Yeah.
And choose them, which I personally don't like that, but, but again, it's just interesting to see the different, the different processes.
Yeah, definitely.
But yeah, I think that's all good. I think, I think we can put together a nice playbook, a nice, Michelle and I had talked about a monthly cycle, like what should we be starting to look at every month? And, you know, so we, so we have structure to how the committee moves through the Art Walk and hopefully get a, you know, keep building up the reputation.
Yeah, just more informative too, for everyone that's on the committee. Okay?
I think it's good, there's more than two. I've done two years now and I feel like there's some sculptures I really liked that made it in, right? Those are my good favorite. There were some I really didn't like that made it in. But someone else, obviously other people like this, so it's like.
It's a variety.
I agree.
Every year when you see them in person and you're like, that looks so much better than the picture.
Yeah.
Well, and it just, it's a good reminder that art is very subjective. What people like.
First year I went on the install and so I got to meet the artists and chit chat with them. Not all of them, I don't know, half of them or so, whatever. Leading to the marketing thing, like knowing that a little bit of, a little advertising or something about the artist, where they're from, how long they've been doing this, what, what's their inspirations? And I don't know, just a little, little, like, you know, like a card, you know, a little something in the Sopra Sun, you know, or somewhere on, on the website or something, you know? That's interesting. I think people are interested in the artists too, not just the, and staring at an art and a lot of people aren't trained in art, so they like, have no understanding what, what is this thing out front here? These bronze blobs, you know? What is it, you know? Well, if you could explain it a little bit. And I mean, one other thought just popped in my head. I worked up at Anderson Ranch Art Center in Snowmass for a time. Every building up there has a name on it, you know? It's so-and-so Clay Center, the so-and-so woodworking studio, the so-and-so children's so-and-so sculpture, because someone came in and wrote a fat check. I have a story, one time I was out there visiting Doug Casper, he ran the ceramics program. We're just chatting in his studio and then this well-dressed elderly woman kind of walked in, oh, hello Doug. And Doug was like, could you excuse us? Excuse me? And I'm like, okay, sure. And I walked out, I almost went over to another part of ranch, chit-chat with someone. And then I saw her leaving, the woman, and I went back in and saw Doug and he showed me $250,000 check. Well done, Doug. But anyhow, getting back to the donations, Ernesto, it's like, we could do a better job if the person, you know, it could be anonymous too. They just worked at, I just helped an architect friend of mine. There's a, they just did a, a big addition on what's called the Bar Fork, the main building there. It's Colorado, yeah, it's CRMS. So they have all these plaques that are part of this new thing. There's a wall and if you give 10,000 or more, you get your name on a plaque, you know? And I'm just thinking a little plaque by, if somebody were to buy an art or donate it, not only is there, you know, this, but then there's this plaque. And some of them are anonymous. Someone, there's 42 plaques for CRMS and I think there was two that said anonymous. Anyhow, again, this is marketing and marketing the idea of buying art and leaving it in town as a legacy, your legacy and.
I, I mean, I, I think part of the work of the permanent collection would be to identify locations for installing. You know, if you're soliciting somebody to buy a sculpture, you need to find a spot for it. So, you know, I would say, maybe we put together a master plan that's a, we've identified four new spots in town that we think would be great to have a permanent sculpture and let's start working on it.
In the playbook.
Yeah.
Like this thing with DeBelmyro, I was like, I don't know.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Go around and identify places and then, you know, we can maybe just, you know, you know, I don't know, the Fourth Street Plaza is town property and I don't know if there's any place there for art, but if there was, it wouldn't be a very, it wouldn't be an insanity cycle, it'd be something smaller. And anyhow, those sites say, it'll fit a three-foot-high sculpture or this could fit a 20-foot, you know, or this could fit a 10-foot-high Ernesto-sized sculpture, you know?
Yeah.
I'd be happy to work with whoever, Lori or whatever, to work on that.
Things for future committees.
We've got lots to do.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah. Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
I second.
Awesome, thank you.
We have to do all in favor or eight?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So, do we want?